First item of business is closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Project number 2021-007.
So moved.
Also, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates or employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, alcohol safety action program. Two, community services board. Three, economic development authority. Four, Fairview Home Incorporated Board of Directors. Five, Montgomery Floyd Regional Library Board. Six, Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority. Seven, New River Valley Regional Water Authority. Eight, New River Community College Board. Nine, Planning Commission. Go ahead, Sarah.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Shepherd, Jakowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are in closed session. Make the jump to light speed.
Closed meeting.
Second.
Third.
Did you get that, Vicki?
Whoever.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Chair Fizikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen? I mean, Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Frazekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is invocation and pledge, and we'll ask our county administrator to lead us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could rise for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item, presentations, recognitions, and awards, American Rescue Plan Act.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As most of you are aware, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was passed earlier this month and signed by President Biden on March 11th. There's still a lot of questions regarding that plan. We've received some information, but there's still a lot of information yet to be shared, but we thought it'd be good this evening, and I believe Mark McGruder, our budget manager, is going to give you a brief presentation on what we know about the Rescue Act so far. And I'll also preface his presentation by saying there are still a number of questions, and as we get those answered, we'll be sharing those with you as well. But, Mark, if you'd step forward and share what we know so far.
Thanks.
Mark, if you're more comfortable dropping your mask?
That's fine.
I think you'd be fine.
Mark's been fighting allergies today, so he might scare you if he drops his...
A lot of us are doing that.
It's that time of year.
All right, I want to give you a little update on the American Rescue Plan. So, the state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery funds legislation, which is part of the American Rescue Plan Act, was signed into law on March 11th. And the bill included 65.1 billion in direct aid to counties. And that's different from the CARES Act. If you remember, with the CARES Act funding, in order to get direct money from the Fed, you had to have a very large population in your county, and I think at the time, it was roughly a half a million people or more in order to qualify to get direct aid. And I believe in Virginia, there was only one county that qualified, and that was Fairfax County. But this legislation has 65.1 billion in direct aid to counties. The funds will not go through the state. Towns and cities will receive their own allocation, and public schools will receive their own allocation. Now, there's an additional 1.5 billion that is provided over two years for counties with public lands. And that's also known as, it's dedicated funding for counties that have or receive payment in lieu of tax revenue. And Montgomery County is one of those counties. But I'm going to preface it and say that we don't receive a lot of money in PILT money. In fiscal year 20, we received like $55,000. So I don't expect a lot of money to come from that, and I don't know if the estimate that I'm going to show you on the next slide includes that PILT money allocation from the 1.5 billion. Counties will receive the monies in two allocations. Fifty percent within 60 days of March 11th, and then 50% no earlier than 12 months from the first payment. And again, our current estimate is 19.1 million, and I don't know if that number includes that PILT money or not, but that number could go up or it may change. And as Craig has pointed out, there's a little bit of uncertainty, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the rulemaking process. So when a bill is passed, the legislation is often written with broad and vague language. And then, to try and clear that up, the rulemaking process is where executive and independent agencies have the opportunity to create rules and regulations for the new law. And that's where we are right now. That process is going on. And so, the federal government is working with national associations like NACO, GFOA, and others to develop more specific guidance on this. But this is what we know at this point. The eligible uses are expenses to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency, premium pay to workers performing essential work. And what that is, that's an additional amount up to $13 per hour that can be paid out for essential work, but there's going to be more specific guidance on that. Provide government services due to lost revenue due to the public health emergency, and then monies for infrastructure for water and sewer systems and broadband. So we will see additional guidance, and, you know, I would say that it may take longer than 60 days to get specific. You know, at one point, with the CARES Act funding, you know, they gave us a deadline, and I believe they, like, right before the deadline, they said, well, you know, here's some extra time. So it wouldn't surprise me to see some adjustment as we go through this process. There's an additional 10 billion to states specifically related to capital that's not part of the 350 or the 65.1 billion. There's a minimum of 100 million per state. The rest will be distributed by formula. And the funds can be used for broadband. Localities have three years to spend the money. The deadline right now is December 31st, 2024. And that's all I have tonight. We'll try to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay. Start over here with Supervisor Shepherd.
Well, I don't really have any questions, but it sounds like we're about to get a lump sum of money a couple times. And it sounds like you already told us everything that you could about what you know about it, so I don't really have any questions.
Okay, Supervisor King?
Oh, just one question. This is infrastructure for water and sewer system. Can we share with PSA?
I don't see why we would not be able to do that.
That's the only question I got. Thank you.
Supervisor Demots?
In the last CARES Act funding, there was some back and forth between the schools, and also, some people didn't seem to understand why the county had given any of that money to the town. So I just want to be, I guess, clear as we're going into this and starting again. The schools are going to get their own. Do we know the dollar amount yet?
We do not.
Okay. And then the towns will get their own?
That's correct.
So the money that comes through this plan is specifically for the county?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Supervisor Blevins?
On the premium pay to workers performing essential work, do we, we don't have any other than the 13?
Yeah, that's pretty much all I know at this point right now. It's $13, up to $13 an hour, and then there's a cap. I think it's somewhere around $25,000, the maximum payout per employee.
And infrastructure for water, sewer systems, and broadband, but no, nothing for air or filtration?
The language hasn't been specified. The only thing that it says is what I have on the slide right now at this point.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Bowen?
Following up on Supervisor Demots' question about the towns being excluded, the school division being excluded from the money that we're going to receive, and we would then use it for everything except for those things. Is that's correct?
Say that one more time.
So the towns are getting their own money, the school division's getting their own money?
Right.
That means the money that we get would not be spent within town limits? Or it could?
I don't have the specifics on that, but that is your money to spend, how you see fit. Now, again, we'll get additional guidance on what you can specifically spend it on.
Right.
But I don't know if there's any restrictions on if you wanted to...
Spend it in Blacksburg or Christiansburg, for that matter.
Right.
Because it's within the county limits. And to follow up on Supervisor Blevins' question, is there any clarification around what an essential worker is or essential work is?
Not at this point.
And the third bullet on that same page, that's page four, it says, provide government services due to lost revenue due to the public health emergency. So our county's revenue trajectory was like this, and now it's flat but still inclined. Would they ever, you know, we didn't lose, we didn't really lose revenue.
That's right.
So...
So, yeah, I don't have specifics on that. There's been a lot of questions that have been asked specifically related to a specific revenue stream. So they're asking, like, if you projected X in sales tax and you didn't receive that, even if you made your total collection, the question has been asked, can you use that as a lost revenue source?
Right.
Okay, but we haven't received clarification on that.
At least it's been asked. That's all I've got. But thank you so much for putting all this together.
Thank you. Supervisor Biggs?
I just wanted to report back. I shared with Steve that there was a meeting, a virtual meeting last week with Senator Warner with elected officials down our way, and I think he's continuing to have them into this weekend. So one of the things that we all urged him to do was whatever he could do for flexibility in the spending of the funds would be greatly appreciated. And he said this was probably it. So with the money coming from the federal government, so that, you know, plan well for it. And I know that it, it looks like it can't be spent for roads. I know that, but it looks like the other infrastructure. And broadband was the big topic of conversation for folks our way, and I'm sure they're going to hear that across the state. So anyway, he said he would push for as much leniency as possible, so we'll see what happens.
Okay. Your page five, your last page there, says additional 10 billion to states specifically related to capital, and then not part of the 350. Where was the 350?
The 350 billion was the total allocation through this act, and the 65.5 was what specifically came to counties.
Counties?
Yes.
Okay. So the 10 billion that's going to the states, they're going to be splitting it up into their counties?
Well, I mean, I don't have specific guidance on what they're going to do with that, but the minimum is 100 million per state, and it will be up to the states to decide how they utilize those funds. And then they have a formula that they're going to distribute the rest based on, and then there's only, there's a caveat that says you can use that money specifically for broadband. But that would be something that the state would decide. That wouldn't really be up to your purview, I don't believe.
Okay, so I guess I can assume that we won't get any of that. Except if it's in broadband.
We'll just have to push.
Which is good.
Push, push.
Okay, any follow-up questions? Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
I really do appreciate Mark and Paul Kaiser in the finance office, because they've been participating in every conference call and meeting that we can find right now to get more information on this issue. And as Mark said, it is still very vague, but we'll keep you posted.
And while you're doing that, Jennifer, I'm going to go ahead and address the next item, which is public address. Citizens have four minutes to come up and speak. We have a sign-up sheet with no names on it, but if there's anybody out there that would like to come forward, you would have four minutes, state your name and your address. Seeing no one come forward, I'm closing public address. Next item is addendum.
No addendum this evening, sir.
We have no addendum. Next item is our items of consent. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, if you'd call or roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chair Frazekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is work session. Is there a motion to go into work session?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'd call or roll.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Frazekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are now in work session.
Mr. Chair, first item we'd like to do this evening is, I believe Mark's going to, are you doing that, or, Mark is, okay. Angie was sitting on the edge of her seat. Mark said to come back and give the board a brief update on where we are since last we talked, as far as the budget, with some information. And then this is an opportunity, I know we've sent out several rounds of responses to board questions, but it's also an opportunity for you to have any discussion that you'd like regarding any additional issues. Mark, back to you.
All right, this is a one-slide presentation. You know, as we go through the budget process, you know, we continue to look at the revenue structure to see whether or not there's additional monies to put on the table for the budget. And so there's a couple of things out there that I want to draw your attention to. The first thing is compensation board revenue. And so, in the proposed budget, we have 5.9, roughly 5.9 million dollars for the compensation board. And that money supports constitutional officers and their salaries. Based on the March estimates from the compensation board, we're looking at 6.2 million dollars, which is an increase of $282,162. That's designated revenue that's earmarked specifically for constitutional officers. And the caveat here is that the compensation board revenue is subject to the governor's approval, and it requires at least a 2% pay increase for the constitutional officers and their employees in order for us to receive the money. The second item is sales tax revenue. And in the proposed budget, we have roughly 10.1 million, and the current estimate is roughly 10.2 million. So we're looking at roughly $89,128 in new revenue. Again, the caveat with that is, is that that number may increase or decrease before we get to the budget adoption phase. That's where the number is at this moment. I will receive another update on sales tax when we get the collections for April, and I will be able to then refine that number even further at that point. And that's all I have at this point.
Okay, well, I'm sure there'll be questions for this one. We'll go ahead and start with Supervisor Bowen.
The 2% pay increase for the constitutional officers and their employees, is that what the increase is going to pay for?
Okay, so the way that it works is the biennium budget includes a 5% pay increase in the second year. And so the county, in order to receive that revenue, we would have to provide 5%, at least 5% over the biennium. You provided a 3% raise in the current year. In order to get that 5%, you would have to provide an additional 2% in order to pick that money up.
Okay.
Now, I don't have clarification on how much they would reduce it, but they have said that if we don't provide at least 5%, then they can't guarantee you'll get that money.
So the question is, we're providing 5%, they're not providing 5%, but they're providing money for... but they're providing money for other positions or...
That, that they're providing 5% on the compensation board salaries that the state provides.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, the county provides a salary supplement in addition to what the compensation board is. So, it's not really, they're not giving us really the 5%, okay? Because their 5% is on their salary, which is significantly lower than what ours is.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So, do you know what, how much the 2% is going to cost us?
Uh, the 2% is in the proposed budget.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Supervisor Blevins?
So, and this, again, this, um, is all going to be based upon the governor's approval?
That, the, the first bullet for the constitutional officers, yes.
Okay. And so, that in, so, as I'm understanding, our 2% to, to match or to make, that is going to be the 282. That's the difference or the increase?
No, the, the, this is how much revenue we would receive from the compensation board based on their 5% increase.
Okay.
Okay, um, the 2% is a separate, the, the 2% is on the expenditure side. This is strictly revenue, and it's based on what they have as their listed salary on their approved budget side.
And this would be additional designated revenue over and above what we had initially projected.
Additional, okay, all right. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Mr. Demonts?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd?
That is still, still clear as mud to me. I, I don't, I'm still not understanding exactly. So, we're, we're, we're given a 2% raise, but this money is for a 5% raise.
Right. So, the, the, the state compensation board sets the salaries that they would provide.
Right.
Um, and so, let, let me just give you an example. Let's say a position at the compensation board is a $30,000 position. And we would have that position at, say, a starting salary of $40,000. What the state is saying is that you have to provide at least a 5% raise over the two-year biennium in order to receive the 5% that they're providing on top of the, the revenue, or on top of the, the salary amount that they have at the state. So, even if you were paying significantly above and beyond for that position, you still would not receive that revenue unless you provided at least 5% over the biennium. And what I'm saying is that in the current year, you, you're, you provided 3%. The proposed budget has 2%. And so, you're covered at this point to get all this revenue, assuming that the 2% stays.
Okay, okay, that, that helps. That's all.
Supervisor King?
Just one question. Now, compensation boards paying, giving two, uh, 5%, and we're going to pay another 2%. So, that means the constitutional officers and their employees get all of it?
They would get, they already received 3% in the current year. They would get the additional 2%, and that would qualify them to receive all of this revenue that the state is going to provide to help support that.
Plus 5%.
It's not in, it's not in addition to.
It's, yeah, it's, it's just helping support what your expenses are.
But they're not going to get what the compensation board gives them?
No, they're going to get whatever you decide to give them.
Yeah. Angie can help with that a little bit too, because that is, that is always very confusing between what we get from compensation board and what compensation board says an increase will be versus what the county, the county's employees who are on the comp and class plan, including constitutional offices, and that's...
Right. So, in your proposed budget this year, we are proposing a 2% pay increase. We gave a 3% pay increase in the year that we're in right now.
Right.
So, the total is 5%. So, the whole expense is in here. When we put this budget together, we didn't know that the comp, how much the comp board would give us. So, we had the expense, but we didn't have any revenue to offset that portion of the expense. So, that's what this represents, is more revenue to offset a portion of it. But it's not tied, you, like Mark explained, it's not tied, but it's tied to positions, but we pay more, at least that amount or more than the comp board has approved. And they don't reimburse every position 100% anyway. It depends on the office. So, it's just the revenue side, because we already included the expense.
So, we're using the compensation 5% to offset ours?
Yes, right, for the comp board positions. That's right. We didn't know we would have that money when we put the budget together.
All right, thank you.
And again, that's because those employees in the constitutional offices, the constitutional officers have elected to be on the county's comp and class pan, comp and class plan, which pays a higher amount than the comp board stipulates for those positions.
Thank you. Supervisor Biggs?
Oh, I'm just excited there's more money. I take every penny. That's me.
And, and, and I just want to muddy the water some more.
Okay.
Because it's fun. Uh, your example that you used on the 30,000, the comp board bases that 5% on the 30,000, not what we're paying them.
That's correct.
The end. Any other questions?
That's correct.
I'll look for anything. All right then. Thank you, Mark.
Well, we thought it would be important to, to just bring you up to speed on where we are. I mean, and staff's constantly looking at revenues and expenditures as we get closer to the final adoption of the budget. And we knew tonight you were going to be talking about setting the advertised tax rate and budget. We wanted to share this with you primarily just to let you know there's not, it's not been a big bucket of money that's fallen from the sky yet, so...
And we're, we're saddened to hear that that's not going to happen.
Art keeps doing his rain dance, but I hadn't, those buckets hadn't fallen yet. Mr. Chair, the staff would be glad to take any questions if there are any. If not, we'll stand ready to answer any questions anytime between now and budget adoption, so...
Okay, um, we can do that. If, if anyone has questions for, uh, staff, if you'll kind of just let me know, get my attention, and you can ask those questions. Or we can go into discussing what we, um, started at our last meeting, uh, talking about additional funding for outside agencies. So, no, no questions for staff, I take it. Okay? I'm, I'm going to go ahead and start first. I think I started first last time on the Boys and Girls Club. And thank you, Supervisor Bone, for, uh, the email, because that helped me to clarify some things with, uh, Michelle Davis. And I misspoke when I talked about the match, because it isn't a, it isn't a direct match. What she was referring to in her email was the fact that the more money they get from the county when they go to ask for federal funds, federal government looks at that and says, "Well, there's, there's backing there. There's support there." And that enables her to get more money, and that's what she was referring to. So, um, and I did talk to her about her fundraising, and that's something, um, actually, um, she said she, I don't know if, has she contacted you?
Not yet, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, but she, she has talked that, that she would like to contact you, so I, I think that might happen. But, um, um, she, she agrees that she needs to do more than what she's doing, um, uh, to raise more funds. So, I think that's going to be in her future too. But, again, I, I'm, I'm going to ask all of you to support that. It's, um, it's $5,000. They're spending, or have $600,000 to spend here in Montgomery County. And, um, it's for our kids. I haven't met a principal yet that has it in their schools that doesn't just love it, because it really helps our kids. And I think, especially after this year of pandemic, when a lot of grades are, are hurting, kids need that extra help. And this money that they spend is to our own teachers. Our teachers are getting paid extra to help the kids after hours, so... To me, it's just a win-win, and I'm glad that we have an organization like that that's willing to step up and help our kids. And, uh, like I said, they, they've, they've covered all the schools down below the mountain in the Shawsville area. And now, they're working up here in Christiansburg too, so, um, I just, I like it. If they, if you, anybody has any comments, I'd like to hear them.
Can I comment?
Yes.
Um, so, $5,000 compared to $600,000 is 1%. Is that really going to make a difference to the federal government when they're evaluating? I highly doubt it. I'm just saying.
Okay.
So, I'm thinking that that $5,000 can come from the community, and they're still going to get as much as they would get from the federal government. So, they're actually going to, it's not going to come out of our pocket. That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I think her point is that, or what she has told me, is that it would make a difference to the federal government. So, I hear what you're saying, but I also, I, I, I'm hearing what she's saying, so I'm taking her for word, so... Anything else?
Um, my children went and used Boys and Girls Club, um, for a year or so. And it was instrumental, having that homework time that they can do, character building. They have mentors there. Um, so it is a great asset and impact, and it's something that, for $5,000 extra, that has a direct impact on our families in this community. So, I am in support of that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
Um, yeah, I have only heard good things about the program, and, and I'm glad it's coming up towards Christiansburg. I really wish we had it all over, and so, I'm supportive of, of that for this year.
Thank you. Supervisor King?
I'd, I'd say that I'm supportive of it, because right now, our kids are struggling in school. And I think it's a good program to help the kids with their homework and maybe move them up a level, you know, where they've been missing so much schooling. I think it's a wonderful thing.
Okay, thank you.
I would wholeheartedly be in support of it. Uh, I know my wife spends a lot of time at school helping kids after school, you know, on her dime, so, um, I know they need it.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't have any trouble doing something to support children, especially $5,000. I know it impacts a lot of children and has been especially, um, huge for working families and lower-income working families, uh, while we've had so much up in the air this year academically. So, yes, I don't have any problem supporting it.
Can I make one more comment, please?
Absolutely.
I do want to at least put it on the record. I am very supportive of the Boys and Girls Club. My sons, at least one of my sons, did, um, participate in their program at BHS. So, I've seen them be supportive in Blacksburg, for example. They wax and wane. And, um, I'm just trying to help them be more consistent throughout the county in a more, um, thoughtful manner than, uh, you know, it's just, because I know a little bit about fundraising and federal funds and things like that, it's just not as, you know, crystal clear, straightforward, how she's asking for the money. Nevertheless, $5,000, I would support that also.
Okay. Well, um, Craig, I believe we've got a consensus on that, on that one.
We can make, we can make that adjustment, sir.
All right. Next item. I don't know which one you want to tackle next, uh...
I'm ready.
Both of us.
All right, go ahead. Supervisor Demonts?
I'm taking my mask off for this.
Okay.
So, I can breathe. Um, I want to, again, revisit the issue of fully funding Onward NRV's budget request. Um, I think this is the third year I've brought this up in our budget work sessions. Last year, um, we were having these work sessions at the same time that we were also watching a crisis unfold. And so, um, I felt like we had a better direction for our efforts at that point, but wanted to renew my efforts this year. Charlie Jewell, the director of Onward NRV, has provided a letter, um, kind of explaining more information about his request, and I did want to read just an excerpt of that, um, because there's been some back and forth on why are they requesting a dollar per capita from us? And then, also, the towns are contributing. The towns' contributions are voluntary, um, and they are not members of the executive board. And they're also not founding members of Onward NRV. Montgomery County, Floyd County, Pulaski County, Giles County, and the city of Radford, were the founding members of Onward NRV. We founded it in 1990 together as the New River Valley Economic Development Alliance. And then, the towns give a voluntary contribution. Um, it does not provide for them the same advantages of membership as it does for us. Um, and so, I just wanted to read a little bit from Charlie's letter, um, to this board to kind of explain their funding model and also, um, the history of the organization a little bit. "In the late 1990s, five of the 10 towns in the New River Valley also decided to contribute funding to Onward NRV to support regional economic development. These contributions were completely discretionary and were made in addition to their county's per capita investment at that time, meaning that they were already included in Onward NRV's service area through their respective county's investment. The contributions made by the five towns to Onward NRV are discretionary and unrelated to their populations. Currently, Onward NRV receives $15,500 from five towns in the NRV, including Christiansburg, $5,000, Blacksburg, $5,000, Pulaski, $3,000, Dublin, $1,500, and Perrysburg is at $1,000. None of the other counties are subtracting the towns' contributions from the county's contributions. So, if Onward NRV is asking per capita from Pulaski County or Giles County, for example, they're not subtracting out the towns' contributions when they're revisiting their funding." I also just wanted to, I guess, make the point, I asked at our last meeting, "How long has it been since we have increased our investment in Onward NRV?" It has been 18 years that we have funded them at the exact same rate. And based on the information provided and the answers to our budget question, our return on investment of our, um, funding of Onward NRV is 361%. So, it's, uh, clearly a pretty good gamble that is paying off considerably. This is an organization that is doing very good economic development work in our region and in our county. And so, I would really like, um, this board, on my third attempt, to consider fully funding their request at our current, um... I think they're requesting now, it's, of course, I do not have this information in front of me, uh, $94,369?
$99,330.
99, 433.
Nine, yeah, what they said. So, I am asking that we increase our, um, our contribution to Onward NRV to meet their funding request, especially, um, because, you know, as we, as we look to recovery, an economic development alliance is going to be very, very important to all of us. And they do partner well with Montgomery County's Economic Development Department. So, I would love for you guys to support it this year.
Okay, uh, my hand is up first. Why don't they include the towns?
They weren't formed to include the towns. Um, from Charlie's letter, I can just read what he said. Uh, "It is uncommon for towns to contribute to regional economic development organizations in Virginia. Onward NRV's policy has been to allow towns in the New River Valley to do so if they choose, but they are discretionary town contributions."
Okay, I get that, but I, why, well, you made, you made a good point that we haven't increased our funds to them for quite a few years. Why hasn't their board updated their rules and regulations so that they can include towns? Because it's obvious that Blacksburg does economic development, and Christiansburg does economic development. So, if they're benefiting, um, then they ought to be part of the...
Well, the, um, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Craig and Angie, um, the model for economic development is that the counties are doing economic development. So, we don't, the county has an economic development office. There are economic development engines that are operating within the county, but neither of the towns has an economic development within the town.
The model of, the model of economic development in Virginia that Virginia Economic Development Partnership recognizes is each county and independent city have their own economic development organizations. But towns within the county work under the auspices of the county's economic development. And that's the way the EDP recognizes it, yeah.
That, that, what he said, yes, that's exactly what I meant.
For example, if the EDP gets a contact about a prospect that may be looking into the town of Christiansburg, they contact Montgomery County.
Okay, um, I look at it as, okay, so, we have more people, including students at Virginia Tech, that we have to pay per capita on, where they are not going to be, even be here, but because they're here, go... but because they're here going to school, then we have to provide that, that money. To me, that's, that's not a fair way to do it. And I'm going to use the Regional Commission as an example. They do include towns. So that would be the big difference. But what they do is, because they include the towns, they deduct those populations from Montgomery County's bill, so to speak. They also take out all students that live on campus. The ones that live off-campus are added to Blacksburg's payment. So actually, Blacksburg pays more than we do to the Regional Commission. But now, that is a little bit different set. But I still look at it, and I see, okay, we're made up of, I forget how many counties, four or five counties? Five counties?
Pulaski, Giles, Floyd, Montgomery, and the city of Radford.
Okay, and we are paying, or would be paying, the lion's share of funds, but yet we don't get the lion's share of economic development. And Charlie did an excellent job explaining in his letter how they go about that. I understand that, that the client is the final word. But again, it comes back to, we're paying the money, more money, because we have more people. And, and I think they're actually using an old number of people. They haven't even used the newest census, which were over 100,000. So that's probably going to go up again next year. But it just, it doesn't seem to be a fair way of doing it. And I would like to see their board revisit that and, and change that, that funding formula so that it was spread out a little bit more. If, if Pulaski has 26,000 people, but yet they get five projects, and Montgomery County has 100,000 people, and yet we, we get four projects, this, just something's not right there. I understand the point that he, that he made in his letter. It was very good. And I also want to say that I do support Onward. I think they, they do a great job, but I just, I have a hard time with how they fund it. And his, his, his chart there that shows that, that his group is on the lowest, the lowest end of funding, that other groups around the state actually ask for more, $2, or I think one was two and a quarter.
Five, I think.
Yeah, so some of them get, you know, expect a lot more money. But I don't know what they get in return for that, so I'm on the fence with this thing. I, I want to support Onward, and I want to do what I think is fair, but I don't think it is fair when, just because we have more people, especially when you're throwing students in on top of it, that, that it's, that it is fair.
Well, I will say, students are people too. I'm a Virginia Tech alumni that moved here for college, and here I am, right here. So students are people too. They're, I mean, I don't, I get offended when people think students shouldn't be counted, because I was one.
Well, not talking about the census, and we're not talking about for benefits. We're talking about for economic development.
Yeah.
So they come to school, they go back home, they're not taking a job here, and they're not living here.
We didn't.
Not all of them. I mean, yeah.
No, no.
It's like five percent.
That's kind of unfair.
Five percent.
If you're a student, and you graduate, and you stay here, yeah, I got no problem with that. You're no longer a student. Now you're a citizen.
The community has developed, a lot of our economic investment in our community is based on a population that includes the students. So you've got restaurants, you've got lodging, you've got all kinds of industry that is built based on the impact of their population in this community.
I hear you. I just, I, I, I don't, I just don't, I don't think it's fair.
Well.
That's my two cents.
Maybe like a, sort of a, I don't know if you call it a compromise or not, but maybe since April is on that, maybe she could take the concern back that you're expressing to the board. I think, when I read through this, I talked to Steve a little bit about it earlier. I, I see their connection with the Virginia Economic Partnership being really critical. And I think too, that now that, you know, we're coming out hopefully of COVID, I see things are probably going to pick up, hopefully, with economic development, and I could see their role being critical. And so one of the things I was thinking about, like if we decide to go ahead and put in this extra money, maybe it would be good to see what our ROI is, our return on investment. Maybe Charlie could talk to us, you know, like we put the money in, then, you know, during the next year, you know, what happens? You know, can he come back and talk to us a little bit about it? And I know it was critical in some of the projects that we, that did get funded in Montgomery County. We had In Motion and a couple other projects. But I think Steve's point is, like, nothing lately has happened. But when you look over the area, has anything really happened lately? I know we had the Commerce Park with Patent Logistics happen in 2020, but everything has sort of slowed down all over. So I would be willing to support it and then maybe see what happens during the next year.
And I know Charlie would be more than willing to come and give a presentation to the board if we, if we requested it. I wouldn't advocate so strongly in every year if I didn't truly believe in what I'm advocating for. They do really, really great work in the community. And not only do I think we should fully fund them at their request, I think it reflects poorly on us that we were part of the organization of the alliance, and we're the only part that is now not funding it. So we were part of creating it. They didn't come to us, we created it.
For a correction, was it stated that we haven't, we've been at the same rate funding for them for the last 18 years? Okay. And, you know, Charlie and them do a great job. They do, part of their job is to retain talent, and that is working with Virginia Tech. But I do have, you know, concerns about if it, what our return on investment, how, what percentage of that does, does stay?
So if, if we're talking about people, I don't know. I can answer, just with the budget question, answers that our staff has provided, that our return on investment is 361% over the past decade. The county's return on investment in the form of property tax revenue from 2010 to 2020 is 361%. The return on investment was calculated over a 10-year period as new investment varies significantly from one year to the next.
Let me ask you, I think when we first started the conversation at the other meeting, wasn't it a $37,000 increase? I see in his letter, it's 27.
Seven?
It's from seventy.
Do you remember?
Seventy-two to 99, so 27, yeah.
So it was always 27?
Yeah, 27.
Okay, that, that's, that's on me.
I may have misspoke too.
No, no, I probably got it wrong. Well, I, I just, number one, I feel like some rules should change, and towns should be included because if you build a facility in the town of Christiansburg, the county benefits and the town benefits. It seems like it should be split. Now, if they were included, I would even be willing to say, okay, well, since it's split, what if we took their population, split them in half, and we cover half, and they cover half? At the per capita rate, but I think that would actually wind up taking more money away from them, so I'd better not suggest that.
I don't, I'm looking to you, Craig, for information. This isn't a funding model that Onward NRV necessarily has created, but more the Commonwealth has created.
Generally, yes. It varies from organizations to organization. I believe in Roanoke, it's $2. It's either $2 or $1.50, I can't remember. It's more than.
Five.
Yeah, it's over two.
Yeah, it's more, yeah. It's more than a dollar.
I mean, the county-town funding, like, that, that it's kind of dictated by Commonwealth practice of counties and cities.
When, when the organization was set up years ago, yes, it was dictated by the state. The state said that every county or independent city should have a economic development group, and, and that's why it was created. And it became the four, it became the four counties and the city initially. And that's traditionally how it's been. I mean, I'm not aware, I haven't done a lot of research, but I'm not aware of any town in Virginia that has their own economic development operation.
All right, well, I'm, I'm probably way out of, way out in left field on that one, but, and he says in his letter, Charlie says, "Using a per capita funding model for cities slash counties is common among the 18 regional development organizations across Virginia." I understand it's common, but is that the only funding method that is used? I, I would be curious to know that.
I don't know the answer to that. I would say, based on history, I would say that statement's true, that I'm sure it's predominantly counties and cities that provide funding to these regional economic development groups. But have I researched that across the entire state? No.
Anyone else?
I have some questions. First, I'd like to understand how the 361% was actually calculated? Is that our dues over the 10 years and the revenue from property tax rates? Is there any indication of, oh, over the last 10 years, Virginia Tech has grown X percent, and we should attribute that to Virginia Tech as more residences and more real estate tax revenue? Or it seems to me that we're assigning that growth to the economic, these four businesses that were actually materialized in our county?
We looked at the, we looked at the businesses that were brought to our county during that time period and the real estate tax revenue that was, and all the property tax revenue that was generated from those particular businesses, not just the growth, not like our overall growth, but those specific businesses. I believe Charlie listed those in his letter compared to our investment.
So are you saying the capital investment in those businesses gave us more re, more property tax revenue?
Yes.
Not the employees that purchased homes and the new homes that were built because of the new employees?
No, we had no way to calculate that. It's just strictly on the realis, on the tax revenue from those businesses.
Okay. Is, I'm not sure if you need to stay up, but I have a question about economic development and Blacksburg Partnership. Are they an economic development vehicle for the town?
They are associated with the town, but I don't know, they're not a town department, no. They're an independent group.
I just want to make sure I, I understand the level funding over the last 18 years. It's the same rate, but we've been paying them more over time?
No.
No. Not at all?
No.
With, it's been a flat number?
Yes.
Okay. The other, the other question I have is, Supervisor Biggs mentioned, you know, sure, all of COVID has affected many, many people, but even before COVID hit, they weren't producing new business as much as they were producing new business in Pulaski, for example. Am I right in saying that?
I think that's a question for Charlie, not necessarily, I mean, I don't know that anybody here has the answer to that question.
We've had a lot of growth with existing companies now. Pulaski's added some new companies, but we've had a tremendous amount of growth within our existing companies.
And what would they do with the $27,000? Have they said specifically, oh, if we get the $27,000, this is what we're going to do, and this is the kind of return on investment that, you know, should we expect another 360% in 10 years? Because that's well worth it, right? But $27,000 gives you more marketing budget? It doesn't give you a person. I might be wrong. I have no idea. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Well, a follow-up with you, Craig. So you're saying that Onward also assists us with businesses that are already here and growing them?
Primarily with talent retention and attraction. That's one of their main focuses, is they work to develop programs that attract talent to the region and also work with existing companies to retain talent.
I would be supportive of this if we knew that the return on investment was even a third of what it was in the past, you know? I'm not even saying a third is my bottom limit, but gosh forbid, if we put $27,000 towards this on an annualized basis moving forward, according to the funding model that they want us to participate in, you would want to see the fruits of their labor. And he's not, he says that he will, you know, it will happen, but...
Well, there's also no way for him to guarantee that. It's, we don't know what kind of economic development investments are coming our way, but we do know that enabling an organization to specifically promote this region through our financial investment over the past 10 years has created a return of 361%. So there's no way anybody can guarantee a continued return of investment of 361%. But we've got a heck of a track record to lean on, and investing more dollars allows them to create more opportunities for investment activities and marketing of this region. I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to put Charlie in a position where he has to come here and promise something that he cannot possibly promise.
How long has this been in place? How long has Onward?
1990.
1990.
So for the first decade or two, was the rate of return something similar?
I honestly can't speak to that, other than to tell you that the, the organization has had its best growth and development over the last five years. It was stagnant for a number of years, and when I first came, it used to be known as the New River Valley Economic Development Alliance. And when Eric Bopp left, gosh, I don't know how many years ago that's been, we did a recruitment, and Charlie worked for the county. Charlie was in our economic development department. And as much as I hated to lose Charlie off of Brian's team, Charlie's done a fabulous job of getting that group gelled together and moving in the direction, I mean, really set some clear parameters for their, what they're trying to achieve. So I, I don't have historical data, but I can tell you that the last several years that organization has done, at least from Montgomery County standpoint, it's done what we've needed a regional organization to do.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the return on investment is an excellent number, and I'd put as much money towards it as I could. And if they're asking for $27,000, that's a great return on investment, you know?
I think Charlie would be happy to come and, and talk in a year's time about how that return on investment has paid off, or how our investment in them has paid off in terms of, you know, what kind of things he's generated throughout the course of the year with that money.
And I don't, I don't expect that kind of return on investment on an annualized basis at all.
Right.
But if we have a rolling average of 10 years, that would probably be a really good measure for us to keep track of, just as a reference. Just as a reference, you know?
Yeah, uh, in, in his letter, he gives, he talks about the ten projects since two thousand and five. Uh, out of the ten projects, three of them came here. And you're correct, if the return on investment just from those three compensates for all this, then yeah, this, it's a, it's a moot point, you know, we need to do it. And, you know, I just want to say that I am in favor of giving them the twenty-seven thousand, if that's the majority of the board's feeling. I just, I'm just saying my questions and to look at it from the outside, when you look at how much money this one county is having to pay because they have a lot of people living here, including students, uh, I, I ju, I don't think it's right. I think another formula should be considered, but I, I don't think that's going to happen.
I'd like to see if we could think about it maybe a different way. If we're getting all this revenue as a result of these new businesses or expansion and retention and things like that, at a return of three hundred and sixty-one percent, think of all the money that we could a, address to broadband or whatever the next issue is, if we actually channeled that money, that revenue towards some of the efforts that we act, I mean, that's quote unquote, a new revenue stream for us. So it would make sense to invest so that we get three times our money back so that we can do more things and pay for the twenty-seven thousand dollars. I mean, it just.
Well, obviously, tax money is what pays the bills here for the county.
So, I mean, I don't know if we can modify how we use the revenues from new industry or retained industry or something like that, but it might be worth thinking about, you know?
I don't know that we would want to modify it and stick ourselves in a.
I, I, I agree. I'm just saying that it's a great return on investment, so, you know, that money is going to allow us to do many, many more things in the future that we wouldn't be able to do if we didn't invest the twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Well, I have, I have a question. I want, is, if we, if we give them the twenty-seven thousand dollars, is it going to boost that, return on our investment that much more, or is it just going to stay flat?
Well, a flat three hundred and sixty-one percent is pretty darn good, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, we're already getting that.
Right. Well, wouldn't you want to get another three hundred and sixty-one percent on top of?
That's what I'm saying, is, will it boost it that much? Or, I mean, that much more?
Again, it'll, it'll be something around that, right? You would expect it to be something around it, but I, I suspect that if we actually got numbers of a rolling average of some form, we would see how consistent it was, and that would smooth out the ups and downs of year to year, because, I mean, when you've got a great recession in two thousand and eight, of course, we weren't, no one was getting any return on their investment or during the year of COVID. But, um, if anything, this is the kind of year that you would want to do it. You throw, throw capital in, you're going to get a great rate of return because the economy's going to grow and it's going to be leveraged, but, you know, we just have to be, have the faith that their practices continuing only get better, and over time, it'll just get better and better. Or three hundred and sixty-one percent's pretty darn good.
Well, I'm kind of like Steve too. I, I think the towns ought to be included in that, you know, this is what you should be paying type situation. And I say that, and I want to ask a question, three hundred and sixty-one percent, uh, property tax revenue, how much of that came from inside the corporate limits of the towns? How many? Were there any?
No.
That's our return, just the county.
Right, but how many of those businesses were inside the town limits?
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're benefiting too.
I'd just like to add one thing, and it goes back to what Craig said, is the leadership of that organization since Charlie Jewell took over has really made a big difference. And I have personal experience with working through Virginia's First and Commerce Park with the help that they were able to give us and work with the Virginia Economic Partnership so that we were able to attract patent logistics into the park, which we will all benefit from. So, um, I feel very confident in Charlie's leadership, if that helps any, after seeing what went before.
I would not advocate anywhere near as strongly if I was not confident in the director of that organization, his abilities, his energy, his drive, his goals. Um, he is a wonderful representative of the region.
Yeah, I do want to say, I'm, I'm not against giving them the money. I'm just asking questions, you know, is it going to help us that much? And if it does, I guess it's great, and if it doesn't, we're getting a lot out of it anyway, but.
Supervisor King?
I'm just listening. I think that breaks down, I may be wrong with my math, but it's been eighteen years since we give them a raise, if you want to call it that. So in eighteen years, that breaks down to what, about fifteen hundred dollars a year?
And the funding model was always established, um, to be reflective of the population. So in eighteen years, our population has grown considerably, and to borrow your term, they have not gotten a raise for the increased population.
I mean, what I've heard so far is maybe some, some of this board wants him to come in so they can ask him questions before we decide, or? I mean, that's, that's up to y'all.
I, I don't think my questions can be answered. As far as adding, uh, towns, because it sounds like towns aren't, aren't part of the deal, so.
And I've been sitting here trying to Google some stuff too. I can't, the la, the largest town in Virginia is Leesburg. Uh, and they're in Loudoun County. And they have an economic development department, just like Montgomery County has an economic development department. The difference is, and that's what I cannot find, is VEDP, their their recruitment model is always, they look for regional agencies for the cities and counties to be part of. So when they have a prospect, if somebody comes to VEDP with a prospect, they don't come directly to Montgomery County first, they come to Onward NRV first and say, we've got a prospect that's looking in your region, and then Onward NRV reaches out to Pulaski or Montgomery or Floyd, wherever they think there may be. So that, that's one of the key values that Onward brings to us as well. Matter of fact, some of the discussions we've had in recent months on prospects have come through Onward NRV. Through VEDP down to Onward to Montgomery County.
Yeah, in Charlie's letter, he explained that very well. He said the same thing you just said, so I appreciate that. So was there a consensus?
I would, I, I would like to maybe propose something that we hear what he's going to do with twenty-seven thousand dollars. And if it makes sense, maybe we do it in a step up manner, like this year, we do a third of it. Next year, we do another third, instead of all of a sudden, he gets twenty-seven thousand dollars. We don't know specifically what he's going to do with it.
I'd want to give the whole twenty-seven thousand this year. I don't want to step it up over three years. I've been asking for three years. So I want the whole thing.
I'm, I can support it. Thank you.
Well, he, he even said in, in the last part of his letter that to fully fund a year four on Onward NRV's five-year strategy, organization has set a fundraising goal of five hundred thousand through locality and private contributions. So he's getting, he, he does get private contributions also. So they're trying to raise two hundred thousand from localities, which is forty percent of that, and three hundred thousand from the private sector, so.
And they've been on a considerable, um, fundraising drive. They want to maximize the dollars that the localities are investing by more than matching them with private investment in the organization. I, I guess a rising tide lifts all boats. If everybody is putting their skin in the game, it enables them to do better and more work in our community.
I'd be willing to make, to support this.
Thank you.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Supervisor Blevins?
Well, I look at it as, of course, there is a concern about, um, how much the towns, the benefit they get and what portion that they're voluntarily given. Um, and then I look at also the issue of, um, counting the population, um, student population, but I look at it a little bit differently. They're here to retain talent, and we have such, right, the two major universities right here, that we want to retain that talent here. And, um, their whole goal is that when there are businesses that want to look at this region, they are the first to contact. And I look at also too, that we haven't given them any increase in the eighteen years, and that we are, were a founding member of that. So I think I, I will support them. I would like to know how they are going to anticipate using the twenty-seven thousand dollars, um, for that. Um, but I think the, the benefit and the return on the investment is worth the, worth the money.
Thank you.
Kind of sounds like we have a consensus on this, so.
We will move forward with including that amount as well.
Yep.
Oh, very much. I appreciate it.
We made you work for it. That's.
Yeah, you did. And Charlie's going to have to work for it too, because I think that, uh, it's very clear that he needs to come before this board to talk about Onward NRV and to make sure that everybody understands the value of us investing in that organization. So, um, I look to you guys as leadership. Let's make that happen, please. Clearly, we need to him here.
We hear you. Okay.
Okay.
You're up next.
Yeah, mine sort of follows a little bit with that. Um, I was asking for the nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty cents to go to Workforce Development Board, and I, um, think that Marty Holliday sent you all the information about what they had done for us the last year, and I think it's very critical because with folks going back to work and, uh, and getting people, you know, in the right positions and being trained, I think that we need to, uh, help the Workforce Development Board with their business activities and with keeping their business coordinator. And I think that you could see from what she sent, you know, what they did in Montgomery County, the fourteen training projects, the six companies, and they, they were, uh, dealing with thirty-nine employees and the job fears that they had, and specifically, they mentioned Spectrum Brands, Lewis Gale and Corning. So I think it's important to try, um, to support them. And, um, I've worked with Marty now, let's see, since Bill Brown left our board, I guess I've been working, um, with that group, and uh, she's not one to ask for money unless it's needed. And she asked a little bit too late last year, and Craig told her that she needed to come forward, you know, during the, um, budget, you know, when the outside agencies came, and so that's what she did this year. And I think she prepared her information well, and I think that, you know, Sarah asked a good question, and I think Marty got back with, you know, the specifics of what had been done. So I would ask for your support for the nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty cents.
Anybody want to jump in on that one? All right, well, I do. This, this organization is federally funded, correct?
And they're losing federal funds.
And, and that is really, I guess, the only concern I would have is they, they operate on federal funds. The federal, um, government took away a position, correct?
Well, funding, yeah. They, they're getting a lack of funds, and they need funds to support what they're doing.
So is this organization going to, every year, increase that amount to the point where the federal government says, well, we don't need to help them?
I doubt that.
That, okay, well, that, that would be my only concern, because the amount of money is not, not that much, but it's taking an organization that's funded by the federal government and now injecting local money into it. It appears from the list of the, uh, the items that they do for us is, is great. Certainly more than nine thousand dollars worth, so I would support the nine thousand dollars. But it just seems strange to me that an organization, again, that's fully funded by the federal government, now finds that they want, they need more money. And I know I read in there a position that they're wanting, that they were going to have to end.
Business Services Coordinator, because that's the one that runs the business services
Yeah.
that go to the localities.
Yeah.
And so that's how, and I could also say that Marty would be happy to come and talk to our group also, if we want to have her.
Anyone else?
I, go ahead. I was just going to say, um, as with anything else, um, I suffer from lack of information, um, but I know I trust, of course, you to advocate, um, for an organization that you believe in, so I do support the request, but it would be really nice to hear from Marty. Just kind of as a, this is the work that we're doing. Um, if this board is supporting it, uh, financially especially, I think it's always interesting to hear where the dollars are going, so if, if I'm ever asked, I can answer instead of saying, you know, I know you, who you can talk to about that. It would be nice to have the information myself.
And I'll agree with that. I, I would support it, but I'd like to know, I'd like to hear about it.
Yeah.
Is this something, like, almost anything that we could, not almost anything, that we could fund for a year? I mean, I agree with Steve, the gosh forbid, I wouldn't want to have them, quote unquote, depend on local funding, which might limit the amount of federal funding that they get. It'd be, I'm wondering if funding them on an annualized basis and approving each, you know, nine thousand dollars every year would make it look like the federal government really does need, when they have a little extra money or whatever, that we're able to get the federal funds back instead of us making up the difference for the foreseeable future. Because I know, when we put it in our budget, it basically till perpetuity, right? Versus, if we do it this year because we don't want to lose a great resource, but federal, you know, we have a whole new administration, they may be funding, and we wouldn't want to continue to fund them if they are willing to give us the, give this organization the nine thousand dollars. So I'm not sure.
I know, I know, excuse me, I know Marty Holliday works hard every year to maximize their federal funds, so I, you know, I, I don't know that if it's in there once, if it is in there permanently, but Mary, you might could speak to that a little more as far as how Mary, how Marty goes about the process every year.
Marty is just one incredible, uh, executive director. If there's money to be found, Marty's going to find it. And she is so committed to, um, what that board does as far as helping people with jobs and everything. So I think that probably the thing to do would be to have her, I mean, I hope you'll support the nine thousand plus, but I think she should come to our board. I think you would be very impressed with what she does.
Before or after we consider the money?
I'm hoping that you will, um, support the, the money. I mean, I'm supporting the five thousand and the twenty-seven thousand. I'm asking for the nine thousand.
If it was a different year?
Was that how it works?
I think, you know.
Yeah, that's how it works, yeah. What do you think?
I think if it was a different year, we might have more reason not to support it, but gosh forbid, we're still trying to dig out of this mess that we're in.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because, yeah.
This is really important at this point in time.
Yeah, it sort of goes with the, with the economic development aspect of everything.
Just one question. Nine thousand and thirty cents, did they divide that between different localities?
Yeah.
And they have, how many localities are involved, like thirteen or?
Yeah, there's, let me see here.
I was looking for that email.
All right, I can count it up here.
I looked online, but I couldn't find it.
Uh, it's, okay, it's Blan County, Carroll County, Floyd County, Giles County, Grayson County, Montgomery County, Pulaski County, Smith County, Washington County, With County, Bristol City, Galak City, and Radford City. So it's, it's called the New River Mount Rogers Workforce. I mean, it goes from this end to the end of the state practically.
Does everybody ask, ask to pay the same?
No, it, not everyone's paying the same thing, and, um, the total amount that she wants from localities is
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven thousand, fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. We are paying the most. Um, and then comes Washington County with five thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents.
I think it's based on per capita.
Yes, based on per capita, trying to see who's next. Trying to see who's next. Looks like Pulaski County, $3,390.30 was next.
Of new revenue.
Yeah.
Of new revenue? Yeah.
Yeah, they're trying to make up for the 37,000. So they've split it up among all the members at a per capita rate. Again, it's that per capita thing as the, having the most people, including students, we have to pay more than everybody else.
But all them counties, it would be nice if they'd have split it equally.
Well, I will say that some of these counties are pretty small and...
Everybody gets the same service, though.
Good point.
I don't know about that. I mean, I would expect that she probably doesn't have the seminars in every single county, right?
Yeah, and you wouldn't have to...
In our county, you know?
They have them everywhere.
I know, but...
And you wouldn't have to have a job fair if you didn't have any jobs to...
Fair.
Fair. I was going to say that, but I didn't think it was right. It is right, isn't it?
Well, my favorite thing about being on that board are the success stories of people that have been helped. I mean, they're like, go break your heart. So that would be good to hear.
And I would add that it is per capita, but it's 10 cents.
I heard you.
Well...
I'm okay.
And again, you know, my feeling is that that's such a low amount for an organization that does quite a bit, that I don't have an issue with it. I could support it.
Thank you.
So I think we got consensus on that one, too.
All right. We'll make the cleanups to the proposed budget. And that was one reason I wanted Mark to be able to share where we were tonight as well, just so you'd have a feel that there is some room for adjustment there, so.
Well, I guess it's all Mark's fault, then, that we approved all these. He made us feel comfortable, so.
Can I ask a question about the general budget questions?
Absolutely. That's what we're here for.
So it was clear from meeting with the school division that we really needed to come up with $1.1 million for them where we only have $500,000. Do we know where that money's coming from?
Where the...
The difference, the $600,000?
It's going to require some adjustments within their proposed budget to try to find that difference because, again...
It's not something that we have to come up with?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
But now, are you considering the 800,000 in extra capital?
No, the raises. The raises.
Other raises.
In order for them to get the state money, they needed $1.1 million. And we were only coming up with a half a million dollars.
Right. They'll have to look within their total budget to see if they can move some things around to match that salary money.
So the difference with them not getting any of the new additional stuff that they proposed at our meeting, they would actually have to cut their budget $600,000 in order to get that $1.1 million or the raise, the raise that the state was going to give them. Am I saying that correctly?
They wouldn't cut it. They would reallocate.
Right.
Reallocate. Reallocate.
Yes, ma'am.
But it would come out of some budgets. Some budgets would be hurt.
Well, they have a budget, just like the county has a budget. And so what they've proposed required five million or so of county funding. You know, the total revenue growth for the county was 1.3, Mark? Two, 1.2. And so we allocated a half million of that 1.2 to the schools, recognizing that that's not, you know, what they needed to be able to address everything in their budget. But just like we have to do when the funds aren't available, we have to figure out ways to reallocate the existing resources to cover the priorities.
All right. I got you. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions on the budget?
Well...
Question, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I talked about just other agencies, just I wanted to, like, to fully fund the 500,000 for the ACE program. Again, I think that is such a huge asset, invaluable asset to the community, especially when we're talking about opportunity and hopefully that Ms. McCovey is going to come speak to us.
She is.
She can have some of these kids share their stories of how there would not be any other way that they would be able to afford or have accessibility to college. And for a lot of students, it is allowing them to continue to afford a four-year college. And also, when we talk about retaining talent, it's not, not everyone does a four-year college degree. There are lots of training that the community college, welding, all these other trade jobs that would bring good money, good-paying jobs for our community. And so I just wanted to advocate my support, obviously my family's benefit from the ACE program, but not only for the act, for the financial part of it, but for the community and give back that my kids have been able to serve, connect with organizations that they may not have already known about. And it just, it gives them such great exposures and to be able to pay that forward, to give them, to become a well-character and citizen, to give back to their community. And so, again, I am totally supportive in anything I can do, you know, to support this. This is just huge for lots of people to be able to have that access, especially our high school seniors to go to school.
Now, when Angie comes to speak to us, was she giving the, some of the things that we were asking for? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just agreeing with Supervisor Blevins.
But that's in our budget right now, right?
Yes, sir, it is. It is.
Did you have something? Supervisor Shepard?
No, sir.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, you know, I'm concerned about the school, you know, budget also. And I'm hoping that when they're able to look at their budget and see if they can move things around. Now, one thing that they don't know is how much money they're getting from the federal government, but I think that it will be sizable, not as much as we're getting probably. But I know part of it's going to be for loss of learning, and they'll have to deal with that. For some reason, I don't really know why, we're sort of a little bit ahead, even though we don't know all the regulations for the county money. It seems with the schools, it's even more complicated with what regulations, you know, are going to come down with that money. And, you know, I don't know, you know, at this point, you know, it's sort of a question mark in the air about can they use that in any way for bonuses or anything like that? Or can they use it for things and move money around in their budget so they can come up with money for salaries or for bonuses? But that's out there. And I think I told Craig when I was talking to him, it sure would be helpful in this process if we actually knew what we were getting and what regulations went with our money and what the schools were getting and what regulations went with their money. Because we're sort of making decisions because we have to. We collect taxes twice a year, so we have to get our budget done. But we're making decisions, and then there's this money out there, but we don't know exactly how it's going to come down. So I'm hoping that it's going to come down in a good way.
Well, and that's, you know, the CARES Act money worked very similarly. You know, they gave it to the state without a lot of clear direction, and the state passed it on to the localities with continual changes. As a matter of fact, I sent Angie some, I mean, they continue to send us stuff. And yes, it'd be nice to know a lot more than we know. You know, I will say that we've talked to the county school staff as well, and they understand the predicament we're in as well. But we'll work together to do everything we can to figure out ways to patch the holes.
Seeing no one, is there a motion to come out of work session?
So moved.
Thank you.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary?
Okay, just a second. Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Chair Frazekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, new business. First item in there is establish advertised tax rate and advertised fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. Is there a motion?
Well, let's see. We need to know what we're filling in.
Yeah.
We got a, we got a motion to talk about it.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Well, a motion to talk about it?
To discuss it.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
The numbers that were proposed, real estate tax rate was proposed to remain at 89 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And the budget number was, I'm looking, 211 million?
Two-ten.
Two-ten, I'm sorry. Two-ten, nine-eight-six, five-fifty-five. That's what's in the, that's what's in my proposed budget to the board.
Your proposed?
That was, that was what I gave to y'all. So it's up to you.
Then we make it ours when we...
Say again.
Okay.
Any, any discussion?
I support that.
I'd just say, go ahead.
I do support the budget, and I do support not raising the real estate taxes to make it more difficult for people in this time of hardship.
Thank you.
I'll just say one thing. I mean, I appreciate the staff and all, what they do to present this to us. One thing I, the citizens do recognize, how much we have grown this county, brought economic development in. We're built, we're remodeling three schools, adding on to them, doing a fire station, a rescue squad, and all this stuff without a tax increase. And I think that's, I think it's wonderful.
Excellent point.
Do support this.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Hearing no more discussion. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Did we?
Yeah, we made the motion in second, right?
Yeah, we already did that.
Or did we make the motion with that in it?
Oh, no, we didn't. Is that, we have to make the motion with that in it? You want to modify your motion?
Yeah, with the 89 cents for the, per hundred, and then the budget of 210 million, 986,555.
And if I can just make one comment to that, what this means is you can always go lower than what's advertised. You can't go higher than what's advertised for the tax rate.
I second that.
Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Frazekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, proclamation, take back the night.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Madam Secretary, take the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Chair Frazekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Next up is reports. Our county attorney.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay, a goose egg for the county attorney. Our county administrator.
I'm going to have to follow suit this evening, Miss.
Double zeros.
I have nothing of substance to add to the meeting tonight.
Okay, well, I'm going to have to count on my fellow supervisors, then. And we're going to go ahead and start with Supervisor Bone.
I'd like to thank the financial staff and administration for just doing an incredible job. Mark couldn't get out of here faster, but that's okay because he deserves to get out of here as fast as possible. And just the outstanding job that the county does for us to, and our citizens, to have the choices that we have.
Well, I did find out to relieve stress, Mark ran about 10 miles this afternoon. So I don't know if he's running back to Ryanair.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor King?
I don't have no report, but like I stated earlier, I do appreciate us all working together on the budget. And I appreciate the staff, their work, and also your spouses for letting you work so long hours on it. You can't forget the spouses. That's all.
Supervisor Blevins?
Just like to echo again all the, thank you for answering for the Finance Department, Angie, for answering all of our questions and taking time to explain it so we have the best information to make the best judgment for our citizens. And just thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Supervisor Demonts?
Well, of course, I agree with everybody else. But I have a specific, I guess, call out that I wanted to make. With the weather getting warmer, I've taken advantage of the opportunity to be outside and look at some of our parks and rec facilities. And they're really in spectacular condition. So we're starting the season with our parks and our areas, our outdoor areas that we maintain, looking really, really awesome. So please pass on my thanks to Mitchell and to the rest of his team because they're really doing a great job.
Thank you. If we can just get it, the rain has greened everything up, but it needs to stop raining in Shalsville so we can finish Creedfield.
Yeah, the mud isn't greening up very well.
But thank you.
Yeah, please do let them know and everybody that's been working on it, they're really, really looking good.
We'll pass that along.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepard?
I'll just echo what everybody else is saying and just say thanks to everybody that, all the departments and the staff and finance and the PSA and all around. And I saw a picture, I think, where, or maybe an email that we got, that they got the playground equipment McCoy. So that's a good thing. But anyway, that's all I have.
Okay. Vice Chair Biggs?
It's a lot of playground equipment, too, if you haven't seen it. It's a bunch of stuff.
Of course, I want to thank staff for all the hard work on the budget and for keeping us updated and continually keeping us updated with hopefully some more money that might come in. And I want to thank the board for supporting the Workforce Development Board request. And then on a personal note, as I came tonight, there has been a shooting in Boulder, Colorado. It's my understanding that six people are dead and people are injured, but it's under control. And the reason that affects me so much is because, you know, I have relatives up there, both my nieces went to school there, and I've been there. And I want to thank, call out to law enforcement, they got it under control and just reminds us how thankful we are to have our law enforcement officers. And it's just sad that that happened. And I guess my thoughts would be with the Boulder community. So that's it.
Okay. Yeah, and I want to thank you all for supporting the Boys and Girls Club. Hopefully, this little bit of money helps to go very far. I really do have a lot of faith in them, and they do great work. And I also want to thank the staff and tell them how much I appreciate how they actually make our jobs easier, even though sometimes it doesn't seem so easy when we discuss things. In the end, we all come to a unanimous decision, which we have on three items tonight. So I think that says a lot for our board. We get the things that we want to get out and let everybody consider them, and then we come to a conclusion. So I think the system works. So I'm grateful for that. My last item is basically an apology to some of you. I have spoken to some of you about a letter that I have signed recommending Ray Smoot for the Commonwealth Transportation Board. In that letter, it says that I support him, but also that you all support him. So I'm hoping that you all support him.
Yes.
All right. I see consensus. So thank you for bailing me out of that one. I'll remember next time to make sure I talk to you before I do that.
He has, just from working with Dr. Smoot, he's been a great representative from Montgomery County. He really has.
That was a really good appointment for us here.
Mm-hmm.
We definitely want to have somebody from the local area, and having them right out